videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for
Covid nineteen and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are going to prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're going to buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
You have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May fourteen at eight thirty PM on TVJ, JNN onespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Covid nineteen tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use, when hands are visibly dirty and after handling animals or animal waste.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Covid nineteen and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are going to prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're going to buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
You have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May fourteen at eight thirty PM on TVJ, JNN onespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for
Good evening and thank you so much for joining us for another RGR Gleaner Communications Group Virtual Town Hall meeting. I'm Emily Shields. A very special welcome to our listeners and viewers on JNN, Radio Jamaica, Power 106, onespotmedia.com, Gleaner Online and TVJ's YouTube channel. This evening, our focus is on Covid nineteen and education. How are the students and parents coping? And what's the way forward? We have a number of people joining us. The big news of today is that Caribbean Examination Council is maintaining its position that the exams are going to go forward in July. The government of Jamaica is saying, we're not ready. Where does that leave all of us? Joining us in this virtual town hall are Dr Wayne Wesley, Registrar at the Caribbean Examination Council. Thank you so much for joining us, Registrar. We have the Acting Chief Education Officer, Dr Cassan Troop. Also joining us, Nadine Malloy, Principal of Arden High School and Principal of Malden High School, Janet Manning. Welcome to the Virtual Town Hall on Education. Gentlemen, welcome. Welcome, gentlemen and ladies. Let's go to start the discussion with this excerpt from the Minister with Responsibility for Education, Carl Samuda.
Meeting was held on Friday and our Permanent Secretary represented us because I had to attend a meeting of the Cabinet and indicated to the Ministers of CARICOM that whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date. Because as you can see, what has been happening here, as the largest Caribbean island that has been affected, to the extent that we have, our situation is somewhat different to some of the smaller islands, smaller states. So the challenges are much greater and we don't feel that we could make a commitment to hold those exams in July under the circumstances. So we are examining very carefully all our options and what possibilities exist for us to give our students the best opportunity to engage the process, having come out of a very challenging few months. And they're still engaged in a very challenging situation. But we are very satisfied that we will come up with the right answer and in consultation with the Prime Minister and the Cabinet, we will discuss the matter more fulsomely and arrive at a position. But at the moment, we have to reserve on the decision taken by our colleagues in the Caribbean.
That's Minister with Responsibility for Education, Carl Samuda. Let me join my guests in this virtual town hall at the moment. Dr Wayne Wesley, the Registrar of CXC. Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you, Cassan Troop. Thank you, Nadine Malloy, Janet Manning. Welcome and we will be taking your calls as well, your messages. You can send us your messages on WhatsApp at three eight one zero zero seven two. That's eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. Let me begin with you, Cassan Troop. As at this moment, is the position of the Ministry of Education the same as the minister communicated in that excerpt a moment ago?
Yes, Emily, our position is the same. Our Cabinet is deliberating. CXC would have offered some options and Jamaica is still considering those options, given the challenges that we are facing in our country as a result of the Covid nineteen pandemic.
When do you think they will stop deliberating?
Well, prior to coming onto this interface, our minister communicated that by Monday, we should have a final directive on the matter.
So at the moment, it's not a position where Jamaica is saying we are not allowing our students to do it in July. You're just saying by Monday, we will have the government's position on it?
Well, by Monday, we will have. We have offered some options and we have been discussing same with Dr Wesley and the team of CXC as to what would be some more workable solutions, given our current situation.
Dr Wayne Wesley, help us with this. Why is CXC so set on going forward in July?
Okay, Emily, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to at least come and provide clarity to the situation. It is important that as we move forward, we understand exactly how the decision was arrived at. I would also like to say good evening to your viewers and listeners. The Caribbean Examination Council would have embarked on a series of consultation once we recognized that Covid nineteen would have been impacting the region in the way it did. Those consultation would have involved several key stakeholders, which would have involved the Ministry of Education themselves, teachers across the region, employers, universities, other tertiary associations such as ACTI, you know, and CAPS, the principal association brought in Jamaica and regionally. So we did not enter into this situation thinking only of any particular country, but really look at the regional situation and how we should have approached the administration of examinations this year. That consultation culminated in the COSAD meeting, the Council on Human and Social Development for Education, which would have involved the Ministers of Education across the region. And the options would have been presented and deliberated on and a consensus was arrived at, which was communicated in the press release from CARICOM last Friday.
Let me ask you, how many ministers attended that Council of Human and Social Development on Education?
Well, we were invited to that meeting and as far as I'm aware, all ministries of education would have been represented at that meeting.
What's the total number?
I could not respond. No, I couldn't. I could not say, well, the COSAD is made up of Ministers of Education for member states as well as associate member states and that would have been around eighteen or so, about eighteen, because then you have in member states and about two or three associate member states that would have attended.
And how is it? Is it that a vote was taken and the majority vote won? Or how did the decision go?
Yeah, it is a consensus vote by all persons present.
Was it a unanimous vote or majority? Well, it couldn't be unanimous because Jamaica voted no.
So you have answered the question.
Thank you, I have. I want to drill some more. Let me drill some more into it as I get this feedback, which we will try and correct in a moment. Do you have any idea, Dr Wayne Wesley, as to what is the overall student population in all of these eighteen member states? And then from your voting numbers, would you say that you have the majority of students in all of those territories? Their Ministers of Education opting to have the exam in July? What's the total number first you can begin with that of students in all of these member states?
Well, the total number, approximate number of persons, don't quote me exactly on this, but the approximate number of candidates writing the exam is about a hundred and thirty right across the region.
A hundred and thirty thousand?
About a hundred and thirty thousand, yes.
Right. And about how many ministers did not agree with going forward in July, apart from the Jamaican minister?
No, I cannot speak to that, Emily Shields. That would have been coming out of COSAD. You would have to contact COSAD to find out precisely the number of ministers who would have voted on that issue. What is important?
All right, I tell you what, let me go to the break and come back. I want to drill down some more in that because if we have majority number of territories with least number of students, then that's a point I just want to zone in on a little bit. When we come back more on the Virtual Town Hall on Education and Covid nineteen.
Covid nineteen and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are going to prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're going to buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
You have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May fourteen at eight thirty PM on TVJ, JNN onespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Covid nineteen tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use.
My classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it. It's really similar to being in class, except I'm in a meeting room and we're not there physically. But I know that we're always all together.
Most of the times, I do not like to bother people to get their gadgets to do my work. So, but some people, they are very generous. I have a neighbour who didn't use phone. I get my notes from there. And otherwise, I have a friend up by the road who I sometimes go to to type my work. I recently had done that.
We're back within this virtual town hall focusing on Covid nineteen and education. Some crucial issues we have to grapple with. I want to re-invite my panelists back. Dr Wayne Wesley, who is the Registrar at Caribbean Examination Council, Acting Chief Education Officer, Cassan Troop, Nadine Malloy, Principal of Arden High and Principal of Malden High, Janet Manning. I'm coming to both principals in a moment. Let me just hear a little bit on this because, Dr Wesley, we carried a story in our newscast in the last hour and a half. And our story said it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly students who are registered for CSEC in May-June. Jamaica has about forty-nine percent of those, so almost half of those. Trinidad has about twenty percent of those. And from my understanding, both Trinidad and Jamaica have expressed reservation with this July date that CXC is now insisting on because other member states who would have less number of students believe that their country is ready to go forward with this exam. Why is that so, Dr Wayne Wesley?
Our insistence should be on the basis that COSAD Education would have determined that the determine the consensus that exams would be in July. But I want to point out, Emily, because it is important that the proper context is given to what we have arrived at. Note that the release from COSAD would have indicated that the various challenges across the region would have been acknowledged. And in particular, as it relates to Jamaica, that special leave was given for bilateral discussions to be had to work to an amicable solution that would take into consideration Jamaica's challenges. As would have pointed out by Cassan Troop earlier, we are having those discussions on the options Jamaica would want to consider, given their particular situation. The meeting did not go without taking note or the meeting did not conclude without taking note that there are unique challenges, particularly as it relates to Jamaica and that bilateral discussion should continue to arrive at a consensus for Jamaica. So I want to put it on the table that it is not a situation where the needs of Jamaica and the situation in Jamaica is not being considered.
Let me go to a student, I beg your pardon, Dr Wesley.
Let me just finish here, Emily, on this point because it is critical. It must be understood that the challenges in Jamaica is being considered and that we are still working with Jamaica to arrive at a conclusion. As pointed out, Jamaica is taking their time in analyzing their full circumstance and situation, doing their own internal review and we are working with them to make sure that whatever solution is arrived at is in the best interest of all.
Well, let's go to what one of the students said about one of the big issues that we're having, internet access. We were told it's about thirty-one thousand students who over this period never had any access whatsoever to the internet. Here's our student put it.
I'm Kemer McCarty and I'm a fifth form student of the Yalasa High School. My questions are, for students without internet access, what do the Ministry of Education plan to do in helping these students to access online classes?
Well, that's a question for the Ministry of Education, but let me zone in and bring in Nadine Malloy from Arden to say, how exactly has Arden dealt with this matter and how will your students manage if it is that you're going to have them do the CXC exams come July with the internet access issues? How did you manage? Ms Malloy?
Thanks, Emily, and thank you for inviting me to share with you this evening. Arden would fare pretty well. We have a broad cross-section of students, those who would have been able to easily access the online classes that we went to immediately the following day after school was closed. But we do also have those students, a few students and really a few students who would not have been able to access. But where we really come from today is the fact that we would have completed almost all of the various syllabi for the exams. We already did mock exams. Unlike some other persons who were just going into mock exams, we had completed mock exams already. So basically, we didn't have a lot left to teach. We would have sent the students off on break right after the Easter break, which came really just about two weeks later. And that is pretty much what we would have been expecting to happen in most schools with some schools where they have to go a little slower with the students, perhaps having a topic or two left to be taught for the various subjects. And I'm speaking from a position of having liaised with my colleagues over the past few weeks to find out what has been happening, how they have been treating with the various issues that as it relates to whether it is online teaching or distance teaching, whatever the case may have been. So Arden is ready. Of course, it probably would be nice if we were able to get the students in to do a last little mock-up with them face-to-face because let's face it, they have been going to school for years using the face-to-face mode. But the bottom line is also what we are experiencing at Arden and those schools that are able to go online fully, they are finding that the sixth and fifth formers, they are not turning up for the online classes now because really and truly, they are in exam mode. They would, as one principal put it, they would have peaked by now and really are anticipating an exam. But that doesn't predict what I know would be happening with some other students.
Right, so let me go to Malden High. What is your experience, Janet Manning, with your students on internet access?
Thanks for the invitation, Mrs Groves.
You're welcome.
At Malden, I don't know how many persons know exactly where Malden is. Malden is sixteen miles south St James. It's a rural community. And one of the major issues that we have been having is the access, the connectivity. A number of the children are unable to get to the online classes, even though the teachers have been putting it out there on a daily basis. It has been a struggle for some children. Some areas in which they live, absolutely no connectivity, nothing at all. We also have some teachers who reside in some of these areas. One teacher experienced that she has to get up at three AM just to make sure that she can upload something and she does not connect with the students until probably another day or two after, if she some amount of connectivity. It is really a very difficult thing for these students.
And how many students do you have who are registered for the CXC CAPE exams?
We have about a hundred and twenty.
And about how many of them have not had any access at all or nothing much that you can write home about since we had our Covid outbreak here in Jamaica?
I would want to think approximately fifty percent, maybe a little bit more than fifty percent.
So are you comfortable with your students doing the exams in July?
Honestly, I would want them to do the exams in July. I really don't see the point in pushing them back because the same issues that we have now in terms of connectivity, in terms of access, in terms of devices and data, those issues will still remain. I agree with Nadine when she said that we would really want to invite the children in for two weeks or three weeks. Because if you look at when they were sent off, it was five weeks before they would have been sent off anyway. So a few weeks, maybe two weeks or so for them to come in and we practice the necessary protocols and then we would want to see them go off.
Okay, let's just go to another question from a student about access that I would want Cassan Troop to respond to. On this same point, how do we deal with it? Because about thirty-one thousand students don't have any access. Here's another student on it.
Preparing for my examinations has been challenging, considering that I am currently residing in Western Centours where it is quite tedious to gain internet access. In light of the recent pandemic, do you believe that the virtual learning has effectively prepared the students of Jamaica to sit this year's CAPE and CXC examinations?
Right, so let me ask Cassan Troop that. We know there are going to be mixed results. We heard Arden is comfortable. We heard Malden has some challenges. But the principal says, we think it's best to get it over in July because they would have gone off close to when they would have gone off for the summer anyway. So how are we fixing the access issues for those who don't have access, Cassan Troop?
Emily, we have been partnering with our internet service providers and we have gone into partnership with ReadyTV in recent times just to make sure that those persons in the deep rural areas are able to connect. So we have brokered a partnership with ReadyTV and one hundred communities will be served in very short order. And the other one hundred and thirty-eight communities will be served in the next phase. So we are working on that. What we have also done is that we have put roving modems in some of our communities. So education officers have been driving to different locations at different times with a scheduled determine by our principals to provide access during particular part of the days for those children who are challenged. So we have been working. We have had communication with MSAT and we have had communication with Digicel and Flow Jamaica and they are working on those areas. They have looked at the map, the geographic map and they are saying to us, these are some of the areas that are in close proximity to their fibre optic network that they will be working on in very short order.
All right, so we'll wheel that into something else. But a student wanted to ask Dr Wayne Wesley, under what conditions would CXC use predicted grades? Let's hear that student with a question for you, Dr Wesley.
My name is Sulee Matneer and I am a sixth form student at Morata Bay High School. and I am a sixth form student at Morata Bay High School. In pre-thing sprout to examination, we have been told about predicted grades. They tell us that it is to be used in circumstances beyond our control or in the case of emergencies. If there is a flood or torrential rains, we are told to wear a water boot and go to the nearest examination centre. Now we are in a pandemic and exams are still being pushed. Under what conditions are predicted grades used?
Dr Wayne Wesley, registrar of CXC, can you respond to that question for me? Under what circumstances are predicted grades used?
Certainly, Emily. Clearly, the student articulated a position for which there needs to be clarity. We use what we call an assessed grade when there are unexpected situations that would have caused a serious disruption to that student being able or region being able to write the examination, albeit through natural disasters such as the pandemic that we are facing now. But in all of those situations that we have, it is required that students actually write one of the papers. That's the current situation that we utilise at the Caribbean Examination Council. We would never have used a predicted grade or an assessed grade in situations where the candidates did not at least write one of the papers being offered. So, but then the students seem to have understood it to mean that there are predicted grades when students did not write any examinations. We have never done that in the past. That would be new grounds for the Caribbean Examination Council and has lots of implications for us to give consideration to in order to offer such solution to the region. Because it has a lot of stakeholder buying that would be very important.
Yeah. So the format, what is the format at the moment for the exams that you intend to hold in July? These are the full exam students who are sitting?
No, in July, what we have offered is a modified approach that will see the administration of the multiple choice paper to ensure that we have a common measure right across the region for this particular examination. Whenever you are administering assessment across countries, it is important that you have a common measure. So we'll have a common paper, which is a multiple choice paper. We will have the school-based assessment and that will be submitted. And those two pieces of information will be used in our grading exercise to ensure that we treat students fairly and in an unbiased manner.
Right, let's go to a break. When we come back, we'll pick up on the SBAs, how far the students have reached with their SBAs and this new modified approach that CXC intends to take at the July exams. This is a virtual town hall on education and COVID. Stay with us, please.
I'm a principal of Yalasa High School. So since the school had closed, we have attempted to have online classes. Because for the most part, our teachers have been committed to the process. A lot of my teachers have been using their own personal resources to try and have online classes. But that in and of itself presents some challenge.
My name is Shavel Ho. I teach visual arts at Yalasa High School. One of the major challenges that I face is not being able to properly demonstrate or to help or guide students while doing their exploration. Now, visual arts is a highly practical course. It's very hands-on. As a teacher, you would know that you would need to watch students, help them, guide them in their exploration, right? So the online thing is really not for visual arts, I would say.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much.
COVID-19 and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are going to prioritise and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're going to buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
They have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May 14, at 8:30 PM on TVJ, jnnonespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM, and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to 876 381 0072. That's COVID-19 and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with a cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
COVID-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing-
Virtual Town Hall, we're focusing on education in this time of COVID-19. Thank you so much to my panelists for rejoining. Before the break, Dr Wayne Wesley touched on the combination of the SBAs with a multiple choice, which is a modified approach that CXC intends to take in their exams in July. So let's hear from a student, a concern about, a parent rather, concerns about the SBA and get some responses from our panelists.
Many of them don't even ready to do their SBA. Many don't go on yet, right? And so I don't think they are ready. I think they should have gotten some more time.
Cassanne Troop, let me come to you. Do you have a sense yet as to what percentage of the overall cohort intending to sit their upcoming exams have completed the SBAs?
Yes, Emily. Our local registrar, OEC, would have done consultations with our principals. And from that data that they would have collected from our principals, it indicated that we have approximately 80% of our principals who would have reported a completion rate of 50 to 90% in terms of the quality of the SBAs. So persons were on their way to completing their SBAs and the period of disruption would have caused a delay in that. And that is why we have been saying to CXC, we would need some additional time to make sure that our students complete and would be adequately prepared. You would have heard from both our principals, who would have reflected different circumstances. As an education ministry, we have to look at the entire picture. We are aware of the challenges in our different areas and we have to take that into consideration. So it is not that we are against the modified version that COSA would have decided on, but we have also proposed some other consideration that are psychometrically sound and we would have wanted CXC to consider those as well.
Right, Nadine Malloy, you have a thought on that? I think your students are ready. But have you spoken with your counterparts, those in rural parishes, about how they have done so far with the SBAs?
Yes, Emily, I actually took the opportunity over the past two days since I knew I was going to be on the programme to reach out even more to principals, even though I've been doing so since all of this started. And yes, unfortunately, there are a few students who are still with their SBAs outstanding. And that's really unfortunate. We know the circumstances that we work with in Jamaica. We have some students that move a little slower than others. But we still have to use this as a marker, if I may look forward. We still have to use the marker as an indicator of something that we need to do differently. Because we are up to the time now when the SBAs ought to have been handed in and we're not able to do that. And, you know, that's a little bit of a blight on everything. Having said that, though, the reality that is facing us is that we have some students who are still outstanding. So again, in the same manner that we have been talking about, and many principals expressed this to me, that it would be good if they were able to come back in anywhere from the beginning towards the end of June. Not, I don't remember the date that CXC has there for the start of the July exams and the proposed date. But if people were able to come back in, then those things could be dealt with. In a fair manner, you know, for example, for practical purposes, on a Monday, you may say it's maths day. On a Tuesday, it's SBA days for so and so. And you work it that way in order to achieve physical distancing and to keep people as healthy as you can. Because that is one of the things that we have been mandated to pay attention to as we restart school or re-engage students, is how do we keep them healthy and safe?
Right, let me go to another student who wanted to know, Dr Wayne Wesley, what else are the means of assessment that the Jamaican students could be exposed to and could use during this period, especially since we have access issues? Let's hear the question from the student.
Greetings, my name is Daniel Allison, a sixth form student of Kingston College. Recently, the Minister of Education made a statement that Jamaica will not be partaking in the 2020 July sitting of the CXC exams. So my question is, is this a situation where Jamaica is removing themselves from partaking in the exams? Therefore, no form of final grade will be given onto the candidate? Or is it a situation where predictive grades would be used for that child or candidate?
Well, I think Cassanne Troop would be better able to answer that question. Is Jamaica ultimately removing itself from the process? And what's going to happen to the Jamaican students if that is a position taken by the government?
Well, Emily, we are in discussions. And Wayne would have outlined that there are several options on the table. So out of the discussions, we had an exam sitting in July with the modified exam. There was an idea of having the assessed grades being used. And Wayne would have given some information considering that. And what we have said is that the SBA in the assessed format, the SBA grades would have been used in addition to the predictive and calculated scores from our teachers. And the evidence that would have been provided would have been the SBA grades, the mock exam grades, the end of year grades, the midterm grades. So if it is that we need a thorough review of the performance and the likely performance of a student, the historical data would have been made available. And then that would have been subjected to the psychometric processes for a grade to be determined for the students. We have also on the table, there was discussion for a September sitting and there was discussion for a January sitting. So those were the options that we have been looking at. The July sitting, as you would have heard from our principals, and we have been doing a series of consultations. We would prefer from our principals that a period of preparation be given to our students, given the challenges that they are now faced with. We would prefer to move them back into a space observing social distancing. You have mentioned the percentage of Jamaicans who will be writing that exam. We have approximately 75,000 entries in CXC. So we have to look at the logistics of moving 75,000 children across 260 centres. So we have 450 exam centres, but we have that across 260 locations. As a country going through a health crisis, we have to look at how do we navigate that in the best interest of our children?
Wouldn't it be easier, though, since we are going to be in the summer months when lower school would be out because of the summer months and now because of COVID? Wouldn't it be easier for you to use the entire school to accommodate the smaller cohort of those sitting the exams and to get the social distancing you need over the July period?
Right, and we would have said yes to that because using the entire school is a plus in this scenario. However, we have to now move those 75,000 students from 75 different homes to these institutions. You can imagine that a number of our students don't go to the school next door to them.
Yes.
And we have been looking at a number of scenarios in terms of those preparation activities that need to happen. How do we get them logistically to the locations daily?
Yes.
While exposing them? We really do not want another alarica in any of our schools.
As you say that, let's go to a student whose voice is this concern about transportation to the examination centre because you're thinking about so many things. Here's a student.
Hello, good day. I'm Akim Polak, president of the St Jacob High School Students' Council. Now, COVID-19 has been really crazy. However, my question is, if examinations are held in July, how will we be transported to these examination centres safely?
Right, let me hear from Janet Manning on this, especially since you are in rural Jamaica. Any thought on this? I know you want to get it over with, but how do you answer that young man's question?
I understand the concerns about transportation, about moving about and the interaction. One of the things we need to consider, you mentioned earlier that not all students go to school that is next door. That is one thing that could be looked at. Is it possible for us to have the students visit a centre that is closest to them instead of having to move all the way 16 miles down or 16 miles up? Apart from that, there is an arrangement that the government has, re the transportation of some students, the students that are on the path programme. There are buses, there are privately chartered modes of transportation that is supposed to take these children to school and back. I would suggest that we peruse these options. Let us look to see if we can engage more of these gentlemen who carry the children on a regular basis. Those buses that we have, the JUTC. In Montego Bay, we have some other big ones that run and take children for as far as overseas. Can we look into those options?
But you've got 125, well, about 75,000 students who will be needing that kind of arrangement. Nadine Malloy, do you know who exactly would have the responsibility for planning the transportation of the children to the centre? Would it be the schools? Or would the Ministry of Education or JUTC be expected to come in and sort this out?
In an ideal situation, Emily, you would want to have the schools, the representatives of the Principals' Association, Parent Teachers' Association, they have a national body. We have the Transportation Ministry. And of course, Dr Troop, we have the Ministry of Education. I don't believe that there's anything that we can sit together and plan for it and make it happen. So once we are able to get a broad base group on the table, then I'm sure we can figure it out. We know what the heavy days are. The heaviest days are for maths and English, for social studies, I believe, as well. Information technology, EDPM, those are heavy days. Those are the days when you are really going to need more transportation. So let's look at those days. I don't know if on the particular day, Dr Wesley, if we can have two sittings for those exams that would help to alleviate the movement of students. And I suppose if they're being transported, they will be in some sort of quarantine to, you know, preserve the integrity of the exam. But I believe we just really need to stick together and work it out.
All right, let's go to a break on that note. When we come back, we're going to look on some of the mental issues that students are grappling with, plus more in this virtual town hall.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos- To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for
Covid nineteen and education, how has the landscape changed?
Parents are gonna prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're gonna buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
They have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May fourteen at eight thirty PM on TVJ, jnnonespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for
Covid nineteen and education, how has the landscape changed?
Parents are gonna prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're gonna buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
They have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
A lot of questions, we want to get them to our panelists as best as we can in the time that we have available, we've been taking many of them. But Dr Wayne Wesley, a student says this, she's a student of Manning's, very concerned about the format that the proposed examination will, will use. I would like to know what happens if there is a power cut or connection has timed out. Will we be able to pick up where we left off or will it be submitted and graded?
Okay, um Emily, this is important. I think there's, we need some clarity here as well. So in respect of the examinations, it's two modalities. Those that have the capabilities and infrastructure in place to allow for the administration of e-testing that will be done. Those who don't have access to the infrastructure required, they will be allowed to do the paper-based modality. In all these situations, we would ensure that we have standby systems in place. We don't necessarily have to be online continuously to write the e-testing paper. And if there should be an extended power cut that prevents you from writing that examination, examination, we normally have backup papers available to allow students to still continue the process without losing out. So we would have put a lot of contingency measures in place along with the technology to ensure that students are not disadvantaged in writing their examinations.
Do you know how many, sorry, do you know how many schools in Jamaica would have that backup system that you require for those who would be doing the e-testing?
The backups, when I talk about a backup system, I'm talking about making the paper available for students to write in case there is a serious disruption with the online uh e-testing capabilities. So it's not a backup as in, okay, you're gonna have a generator there. Right, some, some schools do, uh but I, uh it, that's not the backup I was talking about. It's making the provision for access to be
Yes.
Access to the paper if the e-testing should not work.
So the moment the system goes down in e-testing, a physical paper would be available to give to the students to make the transition?
Precisely.
Okay.
And if, if they're actually working with a laptop, you know, a laptop tends to have a long battery life. Uh in this case, the multiple choice exam is the least demanding in terms of time. It requires only one and a half hour. And so within that construct, persons will be able to continue writing their exams even with the power down. Because at the end of that, the examinations can be uploaded to the system afterwards.
I have a question from a student.
A quick question, a quick follow-up, Emily.
Yes.
Um Wayne, what, um maybe people are not so clear on the three different types of um modalities that you have with e-testing. The online, the buffering and the one that you upload after. That might help people to understand a little better.
Right, so what, within the e-testing environment, you do have the online, the offline and of course, the, the buffering as you call it. But really, what it is, is allowing persons to write, download the exam a couple of days before under strict conditions that allow for them to write that exam and then upload it afterwards. You can be writing the exam, being connected online directly, so everything happens at the same time. Or you can download the exam, get offline, write that exam and afterwards upload the result at the end.
Well, let me follow up, a student wants to know as it relates to the administration of CSEC exams electronically. This is a student from St. Mary High, Ashana Douglas. Many schools are not equipped to cater for such means as such, how will this be carried out? Will students be required to use their own personal computers?
Well, certainly, we do have your bring your own device uh option as well. So students will have to take their device in at least a day before. Because certainly, in writing the examinations electronically, we utilize a safe browser principle that will not allow the students to go anywhere else on that tablet or laptop uh while the examination is being administered. If they venture to do so, uh the prompt will come that you are now exiting your examination and will not be allowed to proceed any further. And we would prepare those tablets and laptops to ensure that that software is installed and that the student will have access to the right window while writing the examination. So that's a protection and of course, they can bring their own device.
Right, so we're, we're gonna have thousands of students who may opt to bring their own computers. What about security in Jamaica?
Security?
Yes.
Can you repeat? I'm, what, I'm not understanding.
How, how do you guarantee that when I take my laptop to school and leave it there, all of us in preparation for exam, that when we go back, there won't be a massive break-in in the center and these things will be gone by the next day? Who guarantees?
Yes, well, of course, all of this will have to be done within a secure environment. And during that exam period, one would expect that security would be increased to ensure the protection and safety of these uh devices.
Let me go to a student who talks about some mental health issues that they have to grapple with during this period of great unpredictability.
Hi, this is Jevi. A lot of students, myself included, are really demotivated and it's really hard to stay positive. Our mental health is really at risk and we need some answers. Ministry of Education, what are you doing? What are you doing to help us to stay mentally positive, to stay positive in a time as this?
Kasan Trup, a big issue for the students. It's a big issue for adults, let alone the students who are so uncertain. What are you doing at the ministry?
So what have we done, um Emily? We have been working with our guidance counselors within our schools. So a part of our Covid nineteen response plan is a psycho-social support for our children. So we have had teams of persons communicating with our children. In our education administrative guidelines, we sent out to our schools and we outlined some strategies for guidance counselors to be given additional resources and deans of disciplines to be given additional resources to maintain in contact with those children who may be troubled at this time. So we have asked those persons who are so trained to be in contact and to make sure that support is being provided. We have also um galvanized and retrained our team at the Ministry of Education. We have a brief team and a crisis response team at the Ministry of Education and we roll. So wherever the demand is, especially for schools that may not be equipped with enough or sufficient guidance counselors, we have always made our guidance team available. We have a classroom of social workers in each educational regional office. And those persons have been providing psycho-social support online and other materials have been sent back to the homes of these children. Our radio program that we now have on um with a number of our radio stations, we have psycho-social sessions through the day um that are being delivered by trained psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors. We have engaged to provide that kind of support. And we now will be launching our mental health training session that will be impacting several of our schools going forward. So we have had a series of activities taking place to ensure the mental health of our children during this time.
Well, let's go to a break when we come back more.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for
Covid nineteen and education, how has the landscape changed?
Parents are gonna prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're gonna buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
They have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May fourteen at eight thirty PM on TVJ, jnnonespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health center and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here.
On the virtual town hall focusing on the Covid nineteen and education. Rejoining my panelists and going back to some questions from some students. I think until we really get a full understanding as to where Jamaica is, it is going to remain extremely difficult for the students who are watching this with the uncertainty. But I have a question here for the Ministry of Education to consider when you do decide Kasan Trup. If there will be communities under quarantine or students being contacts of confirmed cases during the start of the exams, what possible protocols would be in place for students to do their exams? Kasan Trup?
Um well, Emily, these are some of the things that we have been discussing as we look at the resumption plan. Um and as we have been discussing with CXC, the logistics of the plan. So those persons of you, as you mentioned, who would have been in homes, that persons have been quarantined or cases are being investigated. Those are some of the things that have been brought to our attention. The issue of the inequity, as you would have heard from a number of our children, those are other, some of the other things that we have been thinking of. The, the transportational challenges, I mean, it may be easy to say we can partner with. But I must, we have a, a, a rural transportation program in the Ministry of Education. And up to fifty percent of the schools have not been able to utilize the facility effectively because of the challenges in bringing the transportation sector together across the country. So this is not something that we're unfamiliar with. These are challenges we have been treating with throughout operations during, um during the school year. So we understand that as a challenge and many of our principals, if you contact them, they will explain this for you. And our data within our safety and security unit will be able, will be made available to support the challenges that we have been faced with dealing with that. And that is why we have said to CXC, let us look at another approach. We too want to get the children out of this period of anxiety, right? So it is not that we are saying delay, delay. We are saying it's very difficult at this time to pull all the seventy-five thousand entries back together and to navigate that on a daily basis, given the health crisis, we are in an emergency. And therefore, we have said, let us look at another approach, the assessed approach. Look at that, is that reliable? Is that, is there high confidence in that? Is it fair? Is there equity in it? Will it jeopardize the students? I mean, these are some of the questions we're asking. If you, if you look at the kind of work that the children have been doing over a period of time, psychometrically, we can make a decision about these children and then complete the assessment period. It's not that we want an extension of the period because these are the factors and issues that have been communicated to us. We have parents who are in this situation who have said to us, what will now happen to us? If there is a sitting, my child will not be able to come to the makeup classes. What will happen? Where is the equity in that decision? Where is the fairness? It's not just about reliability and validity. And we cannot question that in an exam, that is very, very important. But we have to look at the big picture because we are familiar with a system and not just an individual or one school, but the situation is varied across Jamaica. And as a ministry, we have that responsibility.
Janet Manning. Let me hear you on that, Janet Manning. This student with the concerns about quarantine. At the moment, there is one community in St. Mary where there is a quarantine. We don't know when the government will have some concerns and lockdown, but the student is concerned. What if my community is under quarantine or what if I have been in contact with somebody who is a confirmed case? What will happen to me? Janet Manning, your, your thought and your response to that student?
I can well understand the anxiety behind this question based on the fact that if you are in such a position, your community is under quarantine, there is no way you're going to be allowed out. Which therefore means that coming from the Ministry of Education, what will have to happen is that there have got to be other, um, what you call alternatives for these children. It's just as when your child is going to do common entrance or one of these things. If a child should fall ill, if something should happen and a child is hospitalized, what would we do? What is the next step?
Don't you just miss the exam? Don't you just miss it and you move on to the next sitting if there is one shortly after?
That has been considered, but I wouldn't want to say you just missed the exam. I wouldn't want to say you just missed the exam. First and foremost, we are already delayed, yeah? And there is an option now for the students to do the exam. If a child or if children in a particular community, I would suggest that maybe, yes, put a little more maybe delay, I wouldn't want to say to go as far as probably two, three months after. CXC and the government would have to now move together to say, how do you treat with these cases?
Can I ask Wayne Wesley about that? Let me ask Mr Wesley about that um at CXC because you want a standardized exam. You want an approach that people can say nobody got an easier paper than the next person. But if there are some groups of people who are affected in a quarantine community or they have the virus, because in fact, I think I understand eighty-something of our students have the virus at the moment and others may catch it, what happens to them with this sitting of the exam you intend to have?
Well, um, the Caribbean Examination Council does have a hardship policy. And where students experience difficulty and challenges that is beyond their control, we do give consideration to that. And in some cases, they, they can write the exam at another time, which is a deferred approach. Or we use the assessed grade. Now, I want to, to clarify because I hear the term assessed grade and predictive grade being used interchangeably and they are not one of the same. The assessed grade requires a sitting. You must write at least one of our papers for the assessed grade methodology to be used. In the case of persons wanting to predict, uh use predictive analysis and calculated scores or uh other means of determining a grade, that's a separate issue from the assessed grade utilized in situations where hardship and difficulty would have prevented a student from writing the, um, all papers in the examination. So in situations where students So in situations where students are unable to because of the challenges that they experienced, they can always defer or write the exam at a later date. So we do have policies in place to treat with those circumstances.
Right. Let me go to a concern from a student about ensuring the student sit the exams in the right condition. And I know a lot of us have to be wearing masks at the moment because it is mandatory. Some students will have to take the time to adjust to the mask as well. And some classrooms are exceedingly hot and on the exam pressures, it may get a little hotter. But let's hear the question of a student in relation to the exam conditions.
Okay. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Benjamin. I just want to know if the social distancing will still be relevant after the coronavirus, what school is going to have to be like after?
Oh, so this question was asking, how will things be after? Let me see if Ms Malloy can hazard a guess with that question.
Well, when, when you look at what is happening around the world, persons are, well, countries are taking steps to ensure that they reduce their class sizes or they space their students out, so to speak. But when I look at our context in Jamaica where we actually need spaces, we don't have enough spaces and our classrooms could be said to be overcrowded, especially for our core subjects like math, English, you know, integrated science and so on. The classrooms are overcrowded and I'm actually, I have actually been wrapping my mind around, what do I do come September, especially on my grade nine block, on my grade 11 block, those other smaller, the older, smaller classrooms. And so, and the vice principals and I, we've been talking some about it. So it is something that we will have to address going forward. I'm not sure. Maybe Dr Troop can tell you how much more money they are planning to put in the budget to support private schools so that they can place students in private schools or if they can fast track building some schools. I don't know. But it's something that we have to contemplate though, because it's real.
Right. Let's go to this question that I really wanted about the exam conditions from a student.
Hi, my name is Shamergun, head boy of Shalman High School. We're aware of the government's decision against CSEC holding exams in July. However, I want to know what is the government's next step in terms of ensuring that students get to do their exams in the right condition and at the right time?
Kasan Troop?
Emily, we have been asking ourselves that same question as, as we look at the resumption plan and we are, we are working on that now. And we started to work on that even in light of the decision or the options that would have been presented to us from CXC. Because we are, we are aware that if we have a July sitting, we will have a resumption June, June 1, we will have to bring back our students, we will have to bring back our teachers. Now, if we have that, we will also have to observe the social distancing. Nadine Malloy spoke to you about breaking those groups smaller. Now, as an exam group, we'll be able to maximize on the physical space within our schools. And so we are able to consider that now, but in the full resumption, we are going to be challenged. We are looking at partnerships with our private schools, those private, those private high schools. We are looking at partnerships with institutions that are not being properly utilized. We have schools nearby, some high schools that are underutilized. So we are looking at other facilities within our communities to see how we can break those spaces. We are looking at infrastructure improvement. We are looking at, oh, do we sanitize the practices at the gate, at the different classrooms, the routine that each school would have to go through? Even if they have to come in for the exam, there is a routine that we have to put in place to make sure that our children are safe and our teachers are safe. Now, if we break those classes down into class size of 15, 10, 20, it therefore means that we need additional teachers, even in the time of preparation. If we are to bring back everybody for June, we are going, we may need additional because we have to now split those groups into smaller groups. And those are some of the challenges that we are faced with. But the safety and security of our children is paramount. We will never compromise that. And that is why we have been having extensive conversation with CXC.
Let me, let me have the thoughts of Dr Wayne Wesley on this before I come to a question from a student. If Jamaica's position remains the way it is at the moment, Dr Wayne Wesley, where they're saying, we're not doing this e-testing with you, certainly maybe some paper, paper testing at some other point in time when we're ready for our 75,000 students to come together, would it mean that our students are going to be disadvantaged in this whole education system when they try to matriculate to universities later on in the year?
Okay. So again, I want to be very clear that the requirement for e-testing is still a decision that the country determines whether or not they will participate and perhaps even down to a school level. So we are not insisting that all persons must write the examination using the e-testing modality. Of course, if we do that, it makes the process a lot much quicker and easier to administer. But in cases where that is not possible, the paper-based modality will be made available. So it's not an imposition of e-testing or no testing at all, because we are very cognizant of the challenges and concerns and we are working with the ministries of education across the region for the best implementation strategy that suits their particular situation at this time. So we are very flexible in that regard. I also want to indicate that they, we, COSAD would have given us the go-ahead to have these special considerations to Jamaica in a bilateral discussion that we are having now. And we are having those discussions. And as soon as those discussions are concluded, I'm quite sure the Ministry of Education will and CXC would make the requisite announcement about what we have arrived at. It is important that we understand that we, we know what students are facing at this time. We appreciate the kind of anxiety that exists and we have to take into consideration the prevailing situation of Covid nineteen. And it is within that context that the special consideration and dialogue is now taking place with the Ministry of Education to ensure that a solution is arrived at in the best interest of all. I also want to clarify-
Just, just hold on. I want a student has this. I have a lot of questions that I'm trying to get. I beg your pardon, Dr Wesley. In light of the developments coming from the government of Jamaica and Trinidad, which I touched on before, in their respective decisions not to participate in the proposed July sitting of exams, wouldn't that vote of no confidence strike cause for concern that CXC is not doing what is best for all stakeholders involved?
The vote of no confidence by whom? I missed that.
By the stakeholders, that you're not doing the best for the stakeholders involved.
We, we are doing the best. I'm not quite sure what information that person is using, but we would have done the requisite consultation. And it is from those consultations that the consensus would have been achieved. We would not have been able to achieve a consensus without consultation. So I can't even, I don't understand the premise on which that statement-
I think what the statement is saying is that what you have gone for is a majority of countries as opposed to the majority of students in your decision to have the July exams.
What we have gone for is the mechanism available to us as a regional examination body to arrive at a consensus. And we would have utilized that mechanism to be where we are, where we are at at this time. Notice that from that consensus, any particular group that has special concerns, leave would have been given to engage those persons continually to do what is required. In the absence of information and in the absence of clarity, persons will tend to make assumptions. But I think as soon as this bilateral discussion is concluded with the Ministry of Education, clarity in what is achieved will be communicated to all.
Let's go to our final break. When we come back, there are still so many unexplored issues, but we'll try and get to some of them in the final segment of our virtual town hall.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much.
Covid nineteen and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are going to prioritize and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're going to buy data or it's a case where we'll have to buy food with the little money that we have.
How are the students coping?
You have to access email, Google, download apps. Some of us don't have that advantage.
Being online with my classmates feels like I'm in my normal class. I really enjoy it.
And what about CXC exams?
Whilst they have decided to go with the exam in July, Jamaica could not endorse that date.
Join us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall this Thursday, May 14, at 8:30 PM on TVJ, JNN Onespotmedia.com, The Gleaner Online, Radio Jamaica, Power 106 FM, and TVJ's YouTube channel. Send us your questions to 876 381 0072. That's Covid nineteen and education.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia-
Thank you. We're back with you. Final segment of this virtual town hall, wading through some of the issues in education. I'm rejoining my guests online. Several questions to get through. Let me see if Kasan Troop can help me with this. When you do get to deciding what it is the government is going to do. I'm concerned, says Sherbrook One, Burke One on Twitter. And she's concerned about students who attend boarding schools. How will they be facilitated with sitting of exams?
Well, centers are registered with CXC. So the boarding facility would have been an exam center. And so they would have been reporting to the center as per usual. Perhaps we would not encourage them to go back to the boarding facility where they would reside there during the period. No, but they would therefore need to be moving back and forth or we would have to work with some other arrangements where they are closer to the centers. CXC would have that procedure precedent in place where if it is that you have an emergency, you can sit the exam at the center closest to the-
Okay. Because somebody, because somebody was asking if it is possible for them to change to the center to sit the exam and what's the procedure? Are you aware of the procedure, Ms Manning, Janet Manning?
Yes, it has happened before. It has happened before where, as you say, in the case of an emergency, my, my school, as I said before, is 16 miles out of Montegale. And if there is an emergency, for example, let us say that there is a roadblock, rain, landslideage, the students can go to the center, a nearer center to them. They speak with the onsite supervisor and explain the situation. We have done it before in terms of students from our area who were unable to go into Montegale. We were advised by CXC that we simply go in, speak to the onsite moderator, and they will arrange for the exams to be-
Okay. Okay. So Dr Wayne Wesley, I have a question here from Diana Pars McIntyre. Will there be a mock run by CXC of the process so you can identify glitches and resolve as many as possible before the date?
Mock run? The logistics, the logistical management of our examination is handled by our local registrars. And I think the procedures and processes would have been outlined by them as to how the exam would have been administered during this period. So I'm quite sure it wouldn't be any different. I think the consciousness here is maintaining the social distancing and adhering to what Covid nineteen health advisory would have outlined.
So you're not doing a mock with your new electronic online testing at all, even though you have those systems in place?
Well, the electronic system is not new, you know. We would have been utilizing this across the region and in some places in Jamaica before. So it is not really new. But I would imagine that that would be a part of the decision made by the local registrar in determining which schools are ready to come on and which schools would utilize the paper-based approach.
Right.
I also want to clarify a point earlier, Emily, as it relates to school-based and incompletions, incomplete school-based assessment, and to indicate that we would have extended the deadlines for those up until June 30 for CSEC and K to give persons time to complete those activities. Where there are still insurmountable challenges, the local registrars are actually taking note of those and we will treat with them accordingly, perhaps on a pro-rated basis.
Right. I have a question from a student in relation to scholarships. So let's hear that question.
Hi, my name is Kayla South and I attend Camp Brown High School. My question is, how students who are applying for scholarships are going to get the necessary documents that they need to complete applications?
Kasan Troop, would you be able to help with that one?
Well, Emily, for the, the sitting that is on the table as it relates to CSEC having the exam in July or even the modified approach that our ministry would have communicated as it relates to the use of the SBA and the teacher-assess scores and the review of the internal records, that would make sure that a final grade will be made available for students in time for their scholarship. So we are not asking for a delay. CXC's proposition now would have the results be ready at the end of August, early September. The position that we have put on the table would also have the data ready in that time. So we will not compromise the progression of our students as it relates to the education system.
And as you say, you won't compromise. Yes, Dr Wesley?
No, actually, I just want to make the point now that this situation in the region is not just of regional interest, it's also of international interest. In fact, I have been contacted by the United States Embassy and actually facilitated just week before last, a meeting of Education USA with over 70 universities online in a meeting discussing when grades would be available and what should they expect. We have outlined the modified approach to them. They appreciate what happens there and appreciate the timeframe that grades would be ready actually by the first week in July for them to be able to access, sorry, give provisional acceptance to students based on those grades coming out at that time. So it is of international importance. It's not just a local situation. Regionally and internationally, persons are asking about students.
We, we appreciate that. Final two minutes. Quick question for you, Kasan Troop. What if we have Nadine Malloy who says she's ready, Janet Manning who says she's ready, herself and her students, and other principals are ready? Ministry of Education is saying, we're not ready. Can some principals say, we're going to send our, our students to sit the exam according to this CXC guidelines and date at the moment without the agreement of the Ministry of Education?
Emily, we are aware of the various positions from our principals. So Nadine will be ready and a few will say to us, we are not ready. That information is communicated to our minister and that is also at the cabinet. But the sitting of the CXC is a national decision. It is not something that any one institution can take a decision. It's a country decision. And that is why Mr Wesley, Dr Wesley would have been speaking to the ministerial discussions and the regional discussions, because it's a country decision that has to be made in light of a national crisis that we're having, a health crisis that we're having. And so all those factors will have to be considered for such a decision to be taken.
And Nadine Malloy, your thoughts on that?
It's a little bit difficult for me because I had interpreted CXC to be an independent body because you have independent candidates who are not going to the Ministry of Education to sit exams. We are told, we are told that once the exam begins, the center really doesn't belong to Arden. Arden is overseeing the center on behalf of CXC. Arden is overseeing the centre on behalf of CXC. It doesn't belong to Arden. Therefore, sometimes you're even told that Arden rules can't even apply, even though we've had discussions about that. So it's a little bit of a grey, grey area.
Yes. And time is up on me, time is up on me. I think we need a part two, Janet Manning.
The other thing is, the other thing is, we have to think about the international consequences.
I appreciate that. We have to go, Janet Manning, 10 seconds from you on that.
I would want us to be working together as a country to see if we can get it off. I wouldn't want us to be split along the lines to say, you go and you don't go. What would we use to decide?
All right, we have to leave it there. Can I thank you all so very much? It has been enlightening. There's need for more discussion and hopefully next week, we can hear the final position of the Ministry of Education. Thank you, Dr Wayne Wesley, Cassan Troop, Nadine Malloy, Janet Manning. Thank you to the viewers, the listeners, the students and all those who contributed to the programme, to my production team. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. I'm Emily Shields.
Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much.
COVID-19 and education. How has the landscape changed?
Parents are gonna prioritise and say, look, it has to be a choice of whether or not we're gonna buy data or...